September 18th, 2012. Board of Selectmen Meeting, and probably our last meeting of 2012. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask all of you to join me in a moment of silence for the victims in Connecticut, please. May God have mercy on their souls. Thank you. Just to let you know, because of that tragedy, I debated whether or not to follow through on this. But I thought, as with the 9/11 terrorist incidents, and then this psychotic killer down in Connecticut, we as Americans cannot let that deter us from our lives. And I felt it was best that we carry forward, and we continue to live our lives, and stand up, and fight injustice and evil. And that's why I did this. So I hope everybody agrees with me on that. Thank you for joining us tonight. There are openings on the following committees: Carver Cultural Council, Commission on Disability; BDC Finance Committee; Old Colony Regional Voc-Tech School Committee, two positions; Local Housing Partnership Committee; Recreation Committee, ZBA Alternate; Carver Housing Authority, State Representative; and a Growest Representative to the U.S. Removal Committee. Please contact the Selectmen's Office for any applications. Remind you to residents to donate the food pantry at the Council on Aging or the public library. As an aside to that, I talked to one of the members of the Board of the Council on Aging, and she was absolutely thrilled with the donations this year. And everybody has been more than generous, but we need to keep that up, because this economy is still not moving along at the rate that we need it to be, and there's a lot of people still hurting. So if you can afford to be generous, please do so. It's up to us to take care of our neighbors, and friends, and relatives. So, thank you, and God bless. Other items and possible votes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
As you know, a bunch of town officials had a meeting with the school department concerning the security issues.
Yes.
And we invited the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. Would it be permissible that they could come up and address the Board?
Absolutely. Let's put them on first. Ms. Sorrell, Mr. Maher, would you come up and join us? This is directly related to the events in Connecticut, folks. Our school superintendent, local officials, and everybody are looking at that problem down there, and trying to see what we can do to improve the safety of our community and our children. So, having said that, Ms. Sorrell?
Thank you. There are certain events that make a permanent mark on our lives, and change the way we look at the world, and will influence all of our future decisions, I'm sure. And last Friday in Newtown, Connecticut, an unspeakable tragedy occurred. And our schools, and our towns, and our nation, and the world try to cope with the loss of 20 very young children and their six teachers. We have also lost our sense of security. On Saturday and Sunday, little else was in our thoughts, but how do we come together as a community and reassure our students, our parents, our grandparents, and our community members, and our teachers? The pain of these events last Friday will resonate for a long time to come. But what can we do now to make our schools as safe as possible now and in the future? And after speaking with many of you emailing, we decided to take a first step by calling a meeting of local public safety officials and decision-makers and school personnel. And it's my hope that this will be a beginning out of this horrible unthinkable tragedy, and that we can work together to make the Carver schools as safe a place as possible. So we did come together, and we framed our discussions. First of all, I would like to thank you for letting me come here. And I wanted to mention everyone who took time out of their day yesterday to help us look at what we can do, and the Chief of Police, Mike Mix, Police Sergeant Mark Duffely, Fire Chief Craig Weston, EMS Director Tom Walsh, Town Administrator Rick LaFont, Selectman Jack Franny, Selectman Dick Ward, Vice Chairperson of the Carver School Committee, Paula Kibbe, Elementary Principal Ruby Meistis, Elementary Associate Principal Paula Foley, Elementary Associate Principal Zach Wadecar, Middle High School Principal Scott Neef, Assistant High School Principal John Evans, Assistant Middle School Principal and Director of Comprehensive Health and Athletics, Mike Schultz, Assistant Superintendent Patrick Mahar, Superintendent myself, and the Directors of our YMCA Aftercare Program, because they're in our buildings every single day, before and after school, and this hugely impacts their work with our children. So we discussed three questions. And what security system do we already have in place? And what revisions to these current systems are needed? And what can we do to ensure the safest possible environment in our schools? So, question one: I did bring some examples for you, because I think people need to know what we already have in place. I can't give these to you, because... But, so I'll collect them tomorrow. Jeanne will collect them. But you have a comprehensive crisis manual that we worked with all public safety officials to create in 2007, and then we update it yearly. And it describes complete procedures for lockdowns, bomb threats, intruders, and down to the roles and the questions that people ask if someone calls in a bomb threat, and what kind of information they have to take down. And this was really thoroughly vetted with the police and fire and emergency services. And we review them with teachers and have training on a yearly basis. And we will probably do this again in January because of the recent event. So, this is a pretty comprehensive manual. It's something called a multi-hazard plan, according to the State Department of Education, but we call it our crisis manual. Secondly, in 2007, I worked with the police, fire, and emergency services, and an outside consultant company who specialized in helping schools prepare a manual for first responders in an event of an emergency. And what you have in front of you is, for every school, a completely thorough map that identifies by letters the sides of the building as you approach it, side A, side B, side D. And all exterior doors were numbered at this time. So if there's an emergency, and the EMS needs to bring an ambulance there, we can say, "Side D, Door 16." And they know immediately where to go, that no time is wasted. So this is also available electronically on the police and fire and ambulance. They have electronic copies of all the maps. Also on the maps, you can see that we have stairs, ramps, elevators, fire extinguishers, gas shut-off, electrical shut-off, water shut-off. Because some emergencies can be of a physical plant emergency where you'd need to shut off these services. And we review this every year. We meet with the police and fire, and make sure that everything is up to date. They train their people. It's very detailed in what kind of situation, who's in charge. Sometimes it's Craig Weston's, the Command Center Chief. Sometimes it's Mike Mix or whoever their designees are. And so this has been in place since 2007, and thankfully, we've never had to use it intensively. So, we do have this procedure. The other thing is, as a response to a law that was passed in last spring, every school in the Commonwealth has to have a medical emergency response plan. And we met with Craig, and Mike, and Tom Walsh, and developed this plan. We had very short notice to do this. We learned on August 10th it was due on September 4th. So, but, as usual, your public safety officials in Carver are the finest. They came right there the next day. And we made the plan, and we turned it in, and now we'll work the plan. The law developed out of the fact that 911 was not called in timely fashion in a school, and a child died. So this became a law, that every school had to have a policy and a procedure for who and when you would call 911. But it gave us an opportunity to look at our procedures, and to make sure that we created a safe, immediately accessible environment for all emergency officials. So those things, we have in place. And we feel pretty certain that these will serve us well in any time of a crisis. However, the one place that we know we need to work on is the entrance to our buildings. There are many structural problems that are entrance to our buildings that prevent us from being as safe and secure as we'd like. And this requires immediate attention. We need to address these immediately. And that's what we talked about yesterday. We do know that the Carver police have been trained in active shooter response. That was in our middle high school in 2010. And the police chief tries to send new people off to other training. So we have had recent training in how to deal with an active shooter in our school buildings. The second... the third problem that we have that we're not as prepared for is, although our interior and exterior doors have locking mechanisms, many malfunction frequently, particularly at the Governor John and the R. One K. Washburn Building. And we call the service people to fix them as soon as we can, but they're... Some of them are so old that they break daily, not even weekly. And so then we're forced to chain some of the doors shut when we can't get them to be fixed immediately. Just an added ingredient to this problem is, are some of our doors in the elementary school are nine feet tall. They don't even make those kind of doors. So, we're worried about the doors. We feel like there's an immediate need to replace some of them, and to replace some of the locking mechanisms, if we can, because just daily maintenance isn't enough for these, because they're just really beyond their useful life. On the interior, we have fire doors in the primary building that are as old as a building, which is 38 years old. And they present... They could be a security measure, but currently, they don't have an automatic locking system. And we feel that they need to be... That needs to be addressed. At the age of that building, the doors may have asbestos inside, so we may have to replace the entire one, because we can't break into it to replace the lock because of what it's made of. So, all these things need to be addressed. And we talked about, in a very timely fashion, is that we really just need to do this. And we have cameras in all of our buildings, and we have the ability to see much of the perimeter of the buildings, and a lot of the interior. But in the case of the Governor John, the building, the cameras are very inadequate. And they need to be replaced immediately. And there are some portions of the high school and the primary building that also needs more immediate attention to the cameras. A lot of towns are going to a camera system that's live, that's motion-activated. It's not terribly expensive, but that the police at any time, or fire, can switch on and see any place in the interior in live time. And if we wanted to be as safe and secure as possible, that's what... That's another recommendation that the Chief of Police brought up to us. So what can we ensure that we have the safest possible environment in our schools? First of all, we're going to revise our entry procedures. We are going to, as an immediate fix, that will start on January 2nd when we come back to school, there'll be no more entrance to the Governor John without going to the back building. A visual through the sightlines, and also cameras, and a conversation with the person coming in. Who are you, even if we know them? And what's your purpose here? Because we have no way to do that at the front building. So we would make everybody enter, and then one of the clerk or the secretary would get up and walk them over to the Governor John, and let them in with her secure pass. And that's the only way we can address it immediately. It's not a long-term fix. But this... the principal is writing a letter. We're going to obtain just a simple intercom system, very inexpensively, that will last at least until we can figure out a permanent... We have no voice control in that. We'd only have a camera on that building. They just didn't make these things when these buildings were built. And then, pretty much, all pieces of information about school security say, the safest measure is to have a school resource officer in the building. That is the safest. Because intruders are unlikely to take on an armed officer as their first choice of somewhere to go. So, we really would... You know, we want to discuss further with the Board of Selectmen, because that's not a one-time expense. That's a recurring expense over time that we would have to plan for. But we very much have missed having a school resource officer. It was eliminated in 2008, 2009, just totally because there weren't enough officers. And budgets required the officers to be, you know, on the one of two people on a shift. So, it wasn't a decision that we didn't need a resource officer. It was just purely economics. But we really would very much like to talk to you about putting a resource officer, one at the elementary school, and one at the middle high school. The one at the elementary school would still be going between buildings, but it would be better than nothing at all. We know that principals can't protect their buildings, and teachers, and, you know... I think our teachers are the bravest people in the world, coming to school on Monday after what happened, and principals as well. So, it's something we take very seriously. I've had dozens and dozens and dozens of particularly kindergarten and first grade parents call me, and they are just distraught. And I assure them, we're working as hard as we can to make this school as safe as possible, but we're going to need your help. I mean, we have none of this in our budget. You know, we have a regular maintenance budget of $45,000. And, you know, we do everything we can to keep the schools up and running, but we have two very old buildings, and a high school that's aging on us. And just keeping the HVAC systems going takes up all of our budget. So, I'm just here to... I know we're not on the agenda. It's not an actionable item. But just to put it on your minds and on your agenda. And of course, I'll answer any questions. And Pat's here. He knows all the details about the buildings.
You've come up with all the details since that meeting yesterday?
No, he knows the details about the existing facilities.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Sorrell. Pat, you have anything to add?
No, I think the superintendent covered it pretty much. We do... We were in contact with a security company today. We've got an appointment with them over the break. It's as fast as they could get here. Their phone is ringing off the hook.
I bet, yeah.
It's a very reliable individual that I've worked with before. And he's going to come see us over the break. And we're just going to try to get some of the basics, some of the important things done right away, and then have some suggestions about where we go further. But some of the things we can do immediately, some of the things are going to be no-cost issues also, such as bringing everybody, you know, in the back door. Shutting in the back building. Shutting off that front building, bringing everybody in the back. Just certainly, there's no cost to that. It's a definite improvement. It's one that people will be able to see. And then, there's some other things, such as the intercom system, which is a low-cost item. We've got to deal with doors. Doors are a real issue for us right now. So, we're going to do that. The cameras are a real issue, immediate issue, right now, too.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the Board?
Well, I know, Dick, were you going to say something? I saw you moved them.
You go ahead, I'll second.
I mean, we had our meeting yesterday, and I think it was a general consensus that you'd go out and research all of this, and, you know, bring it forward to what we need to put in for capital items, and maybe recurrent items. And, you know, Rick, and I, and the rest of the Board, and you'll get together and formulate and apply on how we're going to pay for this. Because it's something that really needs to be done.
Agreed.
Thank you, Jack. Dick?
I was also at a meeting. Many of our town officials... Oh, a huge group of us. And they are doing... And the school department called the meeting. It's the day after... The first day we could have such a meeting. And we, the town officials, are doing everything that we can, everything we can. We spent an hour and a half... I think it was about an hour and a half, talking about trying to come up with what we can to do to protect our town better than we do now. And all kinds of ideas came out, and called in by citizens. And some may seem funny. I looked at the expression of the principals and vice principals when somebody brought up that the principals maybe should be armed. But, I mean, everything that you can imagine came up in that discussion. And we know we need action. And I... And we can't get hung up with red tape. We gotta do it. And so, we need the community's full support to get the job done.
Thank you. Sarah, do you have anything?
I appreciate all the work you're doing, as well as the rest of the group.
Just thank you, and the security of the citizens and the children is number one. It's a no-brainer.
All right, I see you're chomping.
You don't see that often, either. I would like... I just want to make it clear, though, that, you know, the school department has good policies, procedures in place. This is... You know, we want to make sure that this is not a knee-jerk reaction. I think this is... When situations like this happen, you're compelled to reevaluate based upon, you know, what you see, how well these could possibly work in the real world. And, you know, so, you know, I wouldn't want anyone to think that the school department has been deficient, because that's really not the case. The case is that we know that we have structural issues. They've been there a long time. We know that any time things happen, you want to revisit whatever procedures you have in place. So, I certainly... I want to, you know, obviously compliment the ability of the school department to pull this together so quickly. But I, you know, I... We need to work on making those buildings as safe as we can. But again, I don't want anyone to think that they are unsafe. That is not the case.
Thank you, Rick. I think everyone can agree that our children, in particular, are our most vulnerable, but special resource that we have in this country. And it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we provide them with a safe environment. And I think, in a lot of respects, we've done that on a continuous basis, through our planning, through our special training and stuff. And each situation is different. There's no cookie-cutter answer. Each site is different, you know? Each population is different. So, it's going to be a major task, trying to tighten this up as much as we can, to make sure the environment is as safe as it can. But I believe with all the people involved, that we should be able to accomplish that, and make sure that our citizens out there are safe about their children in the schools they're in. I just want to thank you, folks, for coming in tonight. Please keep up the good work, and let us know what you need and what we can do.
We'll probably come back with the basics of a plan in January, because it's stating the obvious, but we don't have money in our budget to do any of this stuff. But we're going to have to do it anyway. It will probably require some sort of special town meeting to actualize the funds. But, you know, until we have a plan, we don't want to be going to that. But we appreciate you letting us come here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas, folks.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
You have to wait till citizens' participation, folks. Rod, you have to wait till citizens' participation. Can you hear me?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry for the interruption. The reason I raised my hand earlier was that I've seen it here.
Oh, okay. Okay. I apologize. If you'd gone like this, I... I understand arm and hand signals all my time in the Marines, so if you'd gone like that, I could've probably figured it out.
I think maybe people need to pick it up and hold it, speak into the mic.
One of the gents at the high school was telling me the same thing when we had our town meeting. You have to keep the mic...
Yeah, you got to keep it close.
Peter, are you picking up the sound okay from everywhere else? Yep, all right, thank you. Can you hear us, Rod? Okay. Good night, Mr. Jenkins. Happy holidays. Chief Mix? Be good. Well, so far, so good. All the coals coming to me, and the bills. All right. We have up next is a request for a one-day special license by the Bartending Service for New Wimblin LLC for a function at the Carver Sportsman's Club on January 7, 2012. And what's a E?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further comment?
Yeah, I think we should let Jean say something, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
I got a call today. Could we just change the date? Move the date to the 16th? Because the party that was having the party changed the dates with the sportsman's club.
I assume it's okay with the sportsman's club, and they're aware?
I'm assuming yes.
Yes, Mr. Griffin?
Best I can do.
Thank you.
I tend to... You was going to take care of it.
He did. With me.
All right. You got your two seconds of fame. That's it. All right, moving on. We have a power purchase agreement with no fossil fuels. And I see Mr. Fornetta's here tonight, representing no fossil fuels. Absolutely, in case anybody has any questions, sir.
You're all Santa and members of the Board. Thank you for having me.
Jolly St. Michael, Lou. Thank you. I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Hunter. Why don't you test that thing, Mike? Close.
Speak louder?
There you go. There you go.[1598.56] There you go.
I think you should pick it up and hold it.
Yeah.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay.
I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Hunter, and he indicated to me that all systems are go at this point in time. I haven't heard any objections from anybody else.
No, the document that you have is the document that has been agreed to by the attorneys. So, and as you know, you already agreed to the parameters, so I can confirm that the attorneys have satisfied with the agreement. Would you agree, Mike?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we, God knows, we pay those attorneys a lot of money, so.
An expensive month.
Hopefully their advice is right on target, right? Just as an aside, I think that this is going to be a tremendously beneficial opportunity for the community. I mean, over the course of 20 years, we're supposed to collect upwards of $3 million, you know, in savings on our electricity usage and costs, money that we can certainly apply to other things. We have, we have a lot of things that we need, schools, police stations, fire stations.
Cameras.
Cameras, absolutely, security items.
Police officers.
Police officers. There's a myriad list of, goes on and on and on. So, I think it's a good deal for the community, otherwise I wouldn't have endorsed it to begin with. But, you know, and at the same time, we don't have these industrial plants in our community. They'll be in other communities, but we're gaining a big benefit from it. So, I'm thrilled to see that it's in front of us, doesn't appear to be any disagreements. But I would like to have a motion and a second, so we can open it for discussion by all the selectmen.
I'll make a motion that we accept the power purchase agreement with, what is it, no fossil fuel LLC.
Do you have a motion and a second? Who would like to comment? Go ahead, Jack, raise your hand first.
Just want clarification that this only involves solar projects with no fossil fuels and has nothing to do with the windmills.
Nothing to do with the windmills.
Okay, so it's entirely separate financing.
And entirely, entirely different companies as well.
Okay. So. I had gotten a lot of questions.
Yes.
And I had remembered reading that in here, but I just wanted to have it for the record.
Absolutely.
Sarah?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask you, Rick, our council, you say, is satisfied with this agreement?
Yes.
And where does it say 2.4 megawatts? Could you find the page? Because, as you know, it's the first time we're seeing the document in its final form.
It's tough to decide whether I go glasses or no glasses anymore. Mike, feel free to assist with that.
Sure.
Yeah, I have exactly what section that's in. The, I know, is this, that's not.
We ought to make a motion, let Mike take his beard off.
I don't think it says 2.4, but it says 40 percent.
Well, 40 percent of the, of the.
And I think it was in.
Right.
It should be on the back, right. Exhibit.
The last page.
Okay, thank you. Yes, at the very last page, Sarah, would be the, and again, it references 40 percent, but that's 40 percent of the, of the total output, which is referenced on the front page, of six megawatts DC.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Where is that, Rick?
Six megawatts is on page one. References is 40 percent.
I saw the 40 percent.
That's the percentage of.
Right under recitals, it says six megawatts, so 40 percent to that, Jack.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other questions, Sarah?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor, the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, Jean. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all.
Best of luck.
And, sorry, on behalf of no fossil fuel, I want to thank each member of this board, and especially also Rick LaFawn. Everybody was fantastic, and this should be a model of how private business and towns can work together. So, we cannot wait to tell the good story and the good news to everyone, and it meant a lot to us, so.
And I would like to, obviously, I think no one did more work on this than Mr. Hunter, so I think.
Absolutely.
He deserves a lot of credit.
He's right there.
Oh, there he is.
If I didn't see him, I wouldn't have said anything. I just didn't want him thinking I ignored him.
Would you pass that over to Mike?
Jack, I want to extend that thank you to you, too. That's right.
(laughing).
So, thanks again, guys, and.
Get a little gift for Mary. We know you guys have a lot of work to do.
Oh, jeez.
Yep, a lot of work to do.
She's, she's going to say this was a curse. She's, she's going to go right for it, and then she's going to complain. But I appreciate this, thanks so much.
Yeah, where is she? I think she should be here this day.
Oh, yeah, she's a little under the weather.
Oh.
But.
Hope she feels better.
Yeah, she, but I really appreciate it again, and she appreciates us as well, and thanks again, guys.
Best of luck, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
And we'll keep you guys up to date in how everything, you know, progresses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Keep the sun out, Mike.
All right. Next up is the swearing-in of committee members' policy. And I have a draft here in front of me. And what it states is, "The following policy statement shall apply for all appointees of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator that are subject to Chapter 41, Section 107 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Appointments and reappointments of the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator shall only become effective upon the appointee being sworn to the faithful performance of their position by the town clerk or his/her appropriate designee. Notice of appointments by the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator shall be forwarded to the office of the town clerk within a reasonable timeframe in order that the town clerk may administer the oath of office. The town clerk shall provide written confirmation to the appointee that he or she has taken their oath of office. It is recommended that the new appointee retain a copy of the written confirmation and provide a copy to the chair of the designated committee or board. The Board of Selectmen recommends that other boards and committees adopt this policy in order to promote consistency throughout the organization." And should it.
I just, I drafted this up, Mr. Chairman, based upon comments from the board, both in open session and privately, those that had discussions with me. So, it's really a matter of what you'd like to do with it, but I thought it covered most of the bases that had been presented to me.
The only question I have is that we recommend that other boards and committees adopt this policy. Shouldn't it be mandated?
Yeah.
Well, I think you'd probably have to do that through a bylaw, though, because the selectmen, for instance, don't have jurisdiction over the school committee, or, you know, the planning, the planning board appoints an ad hoc committee or study committee. That's, that's why I concern it. Certainly wouldn't have any problem if we, if we draft something up to also put in the bylaws. But in the meantime, I, my concern is that I don't think the selectmen can make a policy that applies to other boards and committees outside your jurisdiction, that's all. That's why it's in here as a recommendation that other boards and committees do this.
So, could you mandate it for the boards and committees that we do have oversight for, and then say, "We recommend the remaining committees"?
That is correct. And again, if you'd like to advance this in the form of a bylaw, you know, for the annual town meeting, we could obviously do that, too.
I think we should do that.
If you want to just do that period and not have a short-term stopgap, that's up to you also.
No, I think the short-term stopgap is probably good. And I don't think that the bylaw has to be extensive. I mean, it wouldn't have to be much more than this, I would think.
I would agree. In fact, I would agree.
That would be acceptable to me. I'm not sure how my colleagues feel, Jack.
I'd like a motion that we adopt it and can second it, then we can go.
I'll second it.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd like to see that a confirmation comes back to our office as well, so we're fully aware that all of our appointees have been sworn in.
Okay, so you would, you would like the, as a policy, then, you would, you would want the town clerk to forward a copy to the appointing authority, whoever that might be?
Yes.
Okay, because in our case, obviously, but like I said, if, if the planning board adopts the same policy, as an example, and they have an ad hoc committee, we don't need a confirmation of their appointment, so to speak.
Oh, no, we don't. But I would like to have a.
That's fine.
Because we do make a lot of appointments, and you make a lot of appointments, and we could have that confirmation come back to us.
You just put a binder in the office in there and stick it in there.
Okay, so we would like, maybe, the town clerks will provide a written confirmation to the appointee and the appointing authority.
Yep.
Very good.
That would do it.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, you officially didn't vote. You've motioned and seconded, let me speak on the one-day special license for Carver Sportsman's Club, but you actually didn't take a vote on whether to grant it. So, you just confirm that.
You changed the, you changed the date to the 16th, as requested, but apparently there was never a vote.
You know, I've been so tied up the last couple of months trying to get ready, next Tuesday night, that some things are just slipping through the cracks, and I apologize. So, we would revisit the Carver Sportsman's Club request for one-day license.
You know that only works for another week or two, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, thank you.
One recusal, that would be me, Jean. Okay, we're on a roll. All right, reestablishment of the audit committee. This is something that we had committed to and mentioned in the past, and something that we are going to do going forward. My thoughts on this are that we will open this up to applications the last week of, or the last meeting in January, and keep it open for 30 days, and then we will evaluate those applications and reform the committee. Do I have a motion and a second? We can open this up for discussion, and.
I like the motion.
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and a second? And.
I had, should we be qualifying some members of any boards or any departments to be represented on this committee? Because the DOR report suggested, I don't have that with me, but it suggested several of the people that are involved with the financial. And then we found out that the finance committee can't serve on any other committee. Capital Outlay can't serve on any other committee. But we really should probably have a selectman on that committee. And who else should we have on as a?
I, I would just, you may want to take this up at another time, but I think you would want to consider, you know, whether, whether or not a, someone on your finance committee, for example, shouldn't serve on an ad hoc committee of the Board of Selectmen is, would seem a little bit, and it just doesn't seem like a good idea. If you have a financial oversight committee, how can you not have someone on the finance committee? But, so I think that, you know, I know your reference is to the bylaws that are designed to prevent conflicts of interest, but I think it might be an overstatement to suggest that, that a member of another committee, the finance committee, can't serve on a financial oversight committee that doesn't have a budget, doesn't have any paid employees, might be something we want to ask, you know.
Can we change the name of the committee so that it would fit the situation?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think an ad hoc committee is an ad hoc committee, no matter what you call it. But I think, again, I don't know how you couldn't have someone designated by the finance committee on a financial oversight committee. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, so.
You know, the DOR was one agency, but there's a lot of towns that do have audit committees. And I think if you went online to their websites, you might find, you know, what rules they have and who's on it, and maybe kind of put it all together and figure out what you want to do going forward.
We can do a little research on, on some formats other communities might use. Be happy to do that.
Well, we're doing a bylaw for the.
Yeah, because we've got to get this going.
Policy on swearing-in, so, I mean, if we need to modify the bylaws to currently deal with that, we can certainly do, do that when we go put this one in.
Right.
The other thing is, we can take a look at the talent from the community that decides to volunteer for this, if we got it, and then take it from there.
Well, I think we should continue on with this, reestablishing the committee to get applications, because we can finalize the internal portion of it, just so we're not wasting any time.
If we ask for candidates, and then we researched a little bit, so we knew what we wanted for the structure of the committee for our next meeting, then we could, because that would be a good idea to check.
I think that the chairman was thinking towards the end of January, is that what I had heard you suggest?
Right, right, yeah. We'll put her on, put her on the announcements and start soliciting applications. The other thing I think we ought to do is maybe develop some kind of a mission statement.
Yes.
Okay, as to what they should focus on. I mean, I know the DOR report says a lot of things, but what are our goals? Our goal is to improve this, fix that, change this, you know? So, I think what we ought to do, sit down, Rick, and develop a mission statement for that audit committee. I think we can do it relatively easy, I don't think.
I think by looking at other towns and what they have, you might be able to develop that mission statement right from it that's customized to what we want it to have.
It's not a bad idea, Jack.
Should we be re-inviting the committee members if they want to reapply that were serving on that committee prior to?
It's open to anybody and everybody. Those are just my thoughts. Anybody else have something they want to kick in?
I think the dates are important as we are going to vote. We need to put this in place for January 30th, or in that range?
Well, I think, again, correct me if I'm wrong, you were looking at using the end of January as a timeline for collecting applications?
For soliciting applications.
Okay.
Giving them 30 days' window for people to apply, and then once we have the applications, by then we ought to have our ducks in line about a mission statement.
So, that gives us till January 30th to get a mission statement, or whatever else we want to attach to this.
Presumably, you would be taking action in February on such things.
And it could be very timely, because it depends on when we have a brand-new auditor, and we're going to have a whole new set of financial statements that the audit committee can work with.
Is this the first year of that?
Yes.
Okay. The memory's not what it used to be, Jack, sorry.
And we'll have a new town accountant, probably, right?
Yes, we will.
So, having said all of that, can we formulate some kind of a motion on this thing?
I think the motion was already made.
It was already made.
To reestablish the audit committee and start accepting applications.
Yeah, it was first and second, I just need to hold.
Through January 30th?
Yeah.
So, we had a.
When applications open until January.
We had a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I abstain.
It's 4-0-1. Okay. Moving on, fishing tournament request to mass bass busters for Sampson's Pond on May 19, 2013. Again, these are all pretty standard.
I'll make a motion to approve fishing tournament request.
Second.
We have a second. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Minutes of October 23rd, November 13th, and December 4th. What are these things pile up on us, don't they?
They're chapters of the book.
Oh, God.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I hate to be a pest again. I, I'm in the process of getting some stuff to Jean on just the December 4th one. It's not huge, but I just haven't had a chance, and I'm.
Should we table the December 4th?
If that's okay.
Could we also table October 23rd, please?
October 23rd?
Sorry.
All right. Does anybody have any issues with November 13th?
No.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes of November 13th.
Very good, thank you, Dick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further comment? Everybody was present for that? Yes. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Can I get a motion to table the October 23rd?
No move.
We have a motion, how about a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comment on those two items? Please get with Jean and let her know what the specifics are on that, so we can get this cleaned up.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say something along the same lines, you know, I don't want anyone to think that this is, these meetings, meeting minutes continue to be delayed because Jean is not pumping them out in a very timely fashion, so. Please make an effort to look at these and get back to Jean, because as you said, they're starting to pile up a little bit, so. And the further you get away from the time, the harder it is to recollect.
A lot of the changes are from us, so we know that that's not Jean's fault, so. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling the October 23rd and December 4th minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Come on, Jean, get on the ball, will you?
It isn't so not her fault.
All right, we have citizens' participation. There are no extra gifts for getting up and taking up my time. Brian, come on.
Ask for sign-down story, Lou.
At the microphone, hold the mic near your mouth. You're an entertainer, you know how to do this, come on. Speaking to the mic, what do you got?
Do I have to say my name and all that?
Yes.
Address?
Yes.
Brian Griffin, 3 Lacy Lane.
Okay.
Two things. One, someone said the best thing about the school is deterioration. Some of you guys know I used to teach at Blue Hills, and we, at the time, we had to do two lockdowns. I'll tell you right now, I was trained for it, but it still scared the crap out of me. the crap out of me. When you're actually in a building and you have twenty kids with you, and all of a sudden you come over and you say lockdown, you freeze. It's very nerve-wracking. One of the things we did at Blue Hills is we actually got, um, an extra car from Canton Police and parked it in our circle. So if someone comes into the school, the main school, they saw a police car there. It was like a deterrent. I was just wondering if there's something we could do. Do we have any extra cop cars over here? I mean, because I know, I know we have...
I'm not going to touch that one, but...
Brian, that was suggested at the meeting yesterday.
All right.
As a possibility.
Because I know we have more gas stations than we do cops. So, uh, the second thing, why couldn't you get citizens to patrol the school instead of having the cops do it? Why couldn't you do that? Because I could tell you right now, I do it in a heartbeat. I would love to walk up and down the hallways.
Like a neighborhood watch. In fact, I think that they do use hall monitors at the high school.
Yeah, but you...
And some of them are volunteers, so...
Yeah, but if you, um, you can also use stipends and stuff like that for that, you know?
Well, now you're getting into budget issues. And as you heard the superintendent, we are going to have to take a look at rearranging our finances to begin with, just to put in some of these technical and material changes, okay? Uh, but we're not ruling anything out. Don't get me wrong. However...
Same for now. Why don't you just ask for volunteers?
Brian, you know what? Uh, I don't know if that was brought up specifically yesterday, but I think if you could go to a school committee meeting and recommend, talk to them, suggest it then, too. Because they're the ones that are trying to put together most of the policy, even though the rest of us are involved.
We would certainly support them in that, Brian. But I think what Dick is trying to say, that the appropriate forum for that would be the school committee because they're the ones that oversee all of that. That's right.
All right.
So, if they fail in their responsibilities, we could obviously step in there and do something, but I don't think that's going to happen. I think they'll take care of it.
All right, good. I'm done. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Have a good Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right, Robert, keep it short.
Robert Bellbin, Twenty-Sixth Gate Street. Um, I just wanted to bring up about the Cover Sportsman Club. Um, I've used this bartending service, and I think that people need to understand that they are quite professional bartenders, and they're certified in tips. They ask for IDs constantly when I see down there. Um, they're very vigilant. So I just wanted to let people know that this service is top quality, um, when they come in and they're very professional. So, like I said, we've used them through the Sportsman Club, but I've used them personally. Um, and they're a great group of people and bartenders. And the second thing is about your, um, meeting minutes that you guys have done. This is what I've done through the Redevelopment Authority. I've looked back at, uh, meeting minutes. And I have a record now that I developed that has all the meetings that we've been to, if we, the minutes have been approved or not, if they've been posted with the town clerk's office. And same with executive session, to keep track of them because it is very difficult to go back and forth. And I did this for a year, going back for Oz. And, um, this tracking form, right now, after using it, works very well. So I don't know if there's a tracking form that you guys use, too, or...
I really don't need it. I have my own. I have a system that I developed, and I've been using it for seventeen years, so...
Well, just if I...
We just can't get them accepted. Everything else is fine, so, but thank you.
I'm looking at, with me, I'm looking at the future of, if I leave, I want to be able to hand this book, say, this is how I do things. These are how I handle it. All right, this is how I keep track of everything for the next person that takes over from me from the Redevelopment Authority. And, uh, like I said, anything can happen. And in an instant, you could turn around and say, here you go. All right, and that's it. Merry Christmas.
And before you leave, Bob, it also has all the documents that we discussed at the meetings attached to those minutes.
Exactly.
Not just minutes, it's all the different documents. So there's a complete record of it.
Your suggestions are certainly noteworthy and duly noted.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Maybe we can incorporate some of that into our, uh, management practices here.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, Bob. All right, come on. That can't be it. Steve?
Uh, just wanted to remind people, actually, the website, as it's currently constructed, can do that for you. You can, it keeps track of everything you post, auxiliary files, documents, minutes, whatever. And there's an augmented search facility that can just tell you in a second what minutes have been filed, which ones haven't, and so on. So it's being taken care of automatically if you use the website the way you should.
And I do. And I do.
And you do.
My minutes are posted.
Uh, second thing is, I was invited to an executive session, but I think I prefer that to be open session.
We're not, we're not there yet. We're under citizens' participation.
Yeah, we're in citizens' participation.
I just thought I'd give you early notice before everybody left.
Okay.
Want me to come back at the end of... It's up to you.
Citizens' participation, still open. Last chance before the New Year. Next time you get to beat up on us, this is in twenty thirteen. By the way, did Rick indict us when he was talking about the minutes? His bosses? Did he badmouth us?
You picked that up.
Publicly?
Well, if the chairman were here, I wouldn't have, but, you know...
Seeing nobody stepping forward, hearing nothing from the audience, we'll now turn to the town administrator notes.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman. If, I didn't realize it had been that easy all these years, so...
All right. Moving on to selectmen.
A lot of the comments were covered in our discussions earlier, so...
I want to wish everyone in the community a Merry Christmas, please.
Just to make you, just to make me look bad.
That's correct.
She just threw Rick onto the bus.
Please, and please be safe, too, while you're out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jean. Selectmen notes. Would anybody like to jump out there first?
Sure. Just, um, my heart goes out to the, um, families in Connecticut. My prayers continue to be with them. Um, I want you to know that my office hours are continuing every Tuesday from six-thirty to seven, and I also am, um, continuing on Frosty Dog on Saturday, Sundays from eleven to twelve. I do want you to know that it is open at eleven. The Frosty Dog doesn't officially open for, uh, general business till noon time, but we are there from eleven to twelve. And just a little plug, that on Wednesday evenings, Frosty Dog is having a free, uh, black light miniature golf. Uh, he is opening, you know, in the evenings now to give the residents a chance to come down and, um, play around during those, you know, the cold winter nights where you want to just get out. So Wednesday evenings from four to eight, uh, black night miniature golf.
It's free?
It's free. So, go on down. Um, I want to thank the Saint John's Club. I had a very lovely Christmas party this past weekend, and I just want to remind people that the Saint John's Club does rent out their club to, um, residents of the community. And I want to also thank Brian Griffin, who was our DJ that night. Another little plug for a business in Cover is he is a phenomenal, uh, DJ, and he even kept people, the old, older seniors that typically leave early, even stayed till the end because he was such a great guy. So, and on that note, um, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Forrester almost wound up in traction, I heard.
I do want to say Merry Christmas to all of the residents of Cover and my fellow selectmen and committee, et cetera. Thank you. See you in the New Year.
Thank you very much.
I was, I was actually getting a big head that I got some applause tonight, but now I don't feel quite as special, Mr. Chairman, so...
I was debating whether I should be wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. I, I do want to do that, but I also want to say, please keep the families of Newtown, Connecticut, in your thoughts and prayers, uh, over these holidays. Um, I wanted to thank Jean for all the decorations here in the, in the hearing room and in the selectmen's office and around. They look great. Um, thank...
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
And, uh, to echo what Mike spoke on the food pantry, it's, we've had a lot of folks helping and it's, uh, and my wife is happy, and that's great. People are getting food. And Merry Christmas.
That's Saint Mike, by the way.
Saint Mike.
Sarah?
Thank you. Um, I, I, too, was considering exactly what to say tonight, and I was listening to something on the radio this past week where they interviewed a woman from Connecticut who actually wasn't involved in the shooting at all. And she said that, um, she hoped that it would make people start, uh, thinking about how they, how we treat one another and maybe start acting with more compassion and respect towards one another. I just thought that was a really nice way to look at it, a good take on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jack?
Well, and the same as my fellow selectmen, I want everyone to, uh, remember what happened down in Newtown, Connecticut, how much it has profoundly changed all of our lives. Uh, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And with that being said, I want to remind everyone that before January first, you'll be receiving your tax bills. And I also want to remind people that, you know, we have a little, a lot of little businesses here in town, and we should be patronizing in them so that they can pay their tax bills.
Next year, we'll get him a Grinch suit.
Yeah, Grinch suit, yeah.
Bookends, yeah.
Well, Mr. Lafontaine. I just want to let you know that town administrator evaluations are due January eighth to Mr. Franny. So, you guys remember the comments he made tonight about us. So, please, those that are submitting the evaluations, please give them to Mr. Franny January eighth.
What are those?
The town administrator evaluations. You should have had a blank form put in your,
uh... Yep, I did. And they're due January eighth.
If you need more, another one, let me know. I noticed that look on your face.
Rick has already ones filled out, if you want one.
Yeah, I have three.
Just copies them on the machine.
They're all typed neatly.
Um, I, too, want to thank Jean because she helped make this possible tonight. We figured we'd add a little seasonal levity to the, uh, the ending of the year, and I hope everybody appreciated and enjoyed it, especially our at-home audience, so...
You actually look good as Santa. That's a little scary.
It'll be a little extra something. You're stalking, little girl.
Wait till Easter.
I'm out of that. I'm not cutting off my eggs.
I'm not getting the bunny hop out of the back office.
No.
I can't wait to get rid of these pillows, Brian, so stop it. Um, I would just like to remind everybody that, uh, we still have a lot of our citizens at risk overseas, our servicemen and women that are serving around the globe, to protect us here at home. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as we go through this holiday season and we enter our New Year. Um, I'd also like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Have a safe one. Uh, God bless, uh, all of you, the town of Cover, in the United States of America. Thank you very much. And on that note, Jean, do you have some language for me? Or is it this right here?
Is it still one? I think it is still one.
Jean, I'd like it in the record that I'm going to recuse myself for this session.
Okay. We're going to adjourn to the executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual. We'll discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I prefer a, you know, concession.
All right.
Very well. We can accommodate that. We'll put that on the agenda for January eighth.
Oh, it won't be tonight.
Unless we want to hold it. Can we hold it tonight? Let's hold it tonight.
Yeah, I mean...
Get it out of the way.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a short break?
Yes, we can. Five minutes? Before we move into our next, next segment, I just want to remind everybody, if you would like an autographed edition of tonight's meeting, you can purchase a tape over at CCA TV and just give me a call. I'll be happy to sign it for you.
It's free on the website.
Not with my signature, they aren't. But that's good news. Yeah, I'm afraid to open it. Might explode on me. All right. Our, uh, next issue is a public hearing involving, uh, Mr. Stephen Dewhurst. Steve, you might want to come up to the mic. And it deals with, um, issues, ongoing issues with the website. What's that?
What about it? Did you vote to go into executive session yet?
Yes, we did.
No, no.
I don't think you did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need to?
Do we need to?
No, I think, uh, Mr. Dewhurst asked it to be held in open session.
Yes, he did.
Right, so you wouldn't have any need to, right?
Well, we can, we can take a vote to go into executive session, and then Steve can just say he wants to...
I don't think there's any need to, if she's requested.
Does everybody feel comfortable just proceeding? Okay. All right. Um, Ms. Maroney has initiated this, and she's got some things that she'd like to present, and so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hi.
May I say something first?
Certainly.
Um, the way this came about, well, first of all, I made promises to Rick that I would try to be polite, even though it's out of character. So I'll do my best. Um, on Friday afternoon, I came home and found a summons in my mailbox summoning me, summoning me before this board to answer complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, or individual with no indication as to what the charges were or who was bringing the charges. That doesn't sound like due process to me.
Well, in fact, uh, Mr. Lafontaine was told it dealt with emails that you sent to Ms. Marone, so I didn't see that letter.
Yeah, I made some suppositions.
Okay. So, I mean, that was the intent. If that didn't appear in the letter, I apologize for that, but that was the intent.
Well, is, uh, based on my public information request, you received a copy of the letter, so you should have known.
Copy of what letter, Steve?
Uh, the one that was delivered to me, uh, in my mailbox at four-thirty P M. on Friday.
Okay. I didn't pick up my mail until today, so I did not see it, okay?
Okay.
Do we want to move along with this, or do we want to debate the finer points of it?
Probably both.
Helen, why don't you move forward?
First of all, I want the residents to know that I, I did, uh, when I was discussing with, uh, Rick and Mike, uh, what I wanted to bring up, that I felt it should be an executive session because this is a, an, um, more of a personal, um, concern I have of what's been going on. And I thought it, you know, in, with respect to Steve Dewhurst, that I thought it would be best in an executive session. And also, I didn't want the residents to have to listen to the, uh, what you may feel like is, um, a lot of back and forth, if, if you will. I have concerns regarding Stephen Dewhurst, uh, chairperson of the website committee, continuing on as chairperson of the website committee. And, um, my recommendation at the end of all this is to ask Steve to step down as chairperson of the website committee. And, um, I would like to pass out my concerns, um, to the committee, if you would, uh, read through these. But basically, it, uh, stems from the fact that we had a joint meeting on, I believe it was October twenty-third, uh, where we, what I thought came to a mutual agreement on how we were going to proceed with the website committee. And since then, I have had a, a few issues. The day of the meeting, things happened that I thought were totally unacceptable, that Steve Dewhurst conducted, how he conducted himself at that meeting, but I was willing to let it go until behavior has continued since that meeting. And that is why I, um, brought this, um, request of you, Stephen.
Do I get specifics on this?
Yeah.
Did he get a copy of that letter?
No.
Okay.
Okay, while we are waiting to be, this to be passed out, so I can be surprised in public with this.
That's why we were willing to do this another day if you would...
I'm happy.
Okay.
Now, I don't have anything to pass out, but I thought the people at home might be interested in some of the, some of the raw data surrounding this case, so...
Why don't we let Helen outlying her complaint, Steve, and then you can respond and...
The people at home can...
Each one of them.
One, one sentence, please?
Go ahead.
The people at home can go to stevedewhurst.com slash A B C to see all the raw data in this case, as well as commentary, as well as the summons, and so on.
Okay. Let's stay focused on the issues and keep the personalities out. I don't want to hear anything from the audience, please.
Should I read this for the...
Go ahead.
All right. Um, the majority of my concern stems from the fact that the website committee, and it goes back to my original concern on October twenty-third, was never charged with actually doing the I T. work. At the August two thousand and ten Board of Selectment meeting, I will repeat this again for the, uh, benefit of the residents, it was stated clearly that the website committee would bring forth ideas to the Board of Selectment only. Um, this question still has not been answered, why it, the website continue, the website committee continues to do the actual work. So my concern is not abiding by the directive of the Board of Selectment since the August, uh, two thousand and ten meeting. And it was stated at that meeting by Rick Lafontaine, the website committee would not have access to the website and all access is through John Adams with a third-party vendor. The committee will make recommendations to the Board of Selectment and will not make physical changes. What has transpired since the August two thousand and ten meeting without Board of Selectment involvement is as follows. One, leaving the virtual Town Hall software, which was our original vendor, without B O S. approval. This was voted unanimously at the website committee January thirty fir, thirty-first meeting. Their reason was to save a hundred and eight dollars per month.
Uh, may I ask, do you want me to answer each point, or do you want to go through the entire thing?
That's up to Mike.
What do you feel?
I, I think we should go through the whole thing really quickly. Um, in my opinion, virtual Town Hall offered many positives for this town. It was minimal cost. Third-party vendor would alleviate any conflicts. Uh, large customer support base, not relying on one person. Uh, Steve Dewhurst even commented what a great site Plymouth has, which uses the virtual Town Hall software. And the virtual Town Hall software has over four hundred users in, um, over fifteen Massachusetts towns have, uh, gone on board with the virtual Town Hall just this past month. So they're doing something right. Second, concern of one person coding the website and having full control of town's information. I have witnessed this in my own profession. That has cost one of my companies thousands of dollars because we lost a, um, a software developer who did a lot of the custom programming, and then we had to seek an outside consultant when that person left. So custom coding is dangerous because the town becomes reliant on one person, which is Steve Dewhurst. Up to this point, Steve Dewhurst in, he is in control of, I may not be exactly correct, um, I'm sure he'll correct me if I'm wrong, uh, custom coding, encrypting, setting up accounts and passwords, manually backing up website files. And Steve Dewhurst stated publicly that he wrote and created the faith, safety features within the website. Next, August sec, two thousand and eleven meeting, website committee voted unanimously to allow themselves, the, the committee, to make minor look and feel decisions without open meeting. Next, discussed at October twenty-third, two thousand and twelve, that policies... Next, discussed at October 23rd, 2012, that policies and procedures would be created and discussed with the Board of Selectmen and I believe that we made a mutual agreement that, um, they would not go forward with the subscription facility until those policies and procedures were completed and reviewed by the Board of Selectmen as well. At the Website Committee on September 21st meeting, out of respect for the Board of Selectmen request to temporarily, temporarily suspend the, the subscription facility, the Committee voted two to one to suspend it. Steve Dewhurst opposed. He wanted to continue with the subscription facility even though we had asked to have it suspended temporarily. December 14th, 2012, the subscription facility is up and running again without discussion with the BOS. And again, this was an agreement that we had that that would not happen. Next, since the Committee's inception, no meeting minutes were ever created until recently. And, uh, last on this section is, um, I had mentioned at that meeting that there was inappropriate language that I felt was on the website and that taking it down would, um, be the right thing to do and it was not done, um, at that point in time. My bigger concern as things have unfolded is the concern of the software that I just mentioned, but it's more, we are a new team here. And as I do at work, you have to have teams that are willing to work together and this is not happening at all. And that's why my next section, some of it, I was just going to let it go if things had improved since the October 23rd meeting, but it hasn't, it's gotten worse. The disrespect and, in my opinion, insubordinate behavior that Steve Dewhurst has shown towards a few of the members, I think is unacceptable. First, Steve Dewhurst chooses to send any updated correspondence relative to the Website Committee to specific Board of Selectmen members. That would be Sarah Hewens, as you know, his wife, and Dick Ward. Mike O'Donnell, Jack Franny and Helen Maroni have consistently been left out of the email correspondence, which I think is unacceptable, especially since I am the one that has had the most concerns of, of late. He sent a formal letter on October 15th dictating a directive to Mike O'Donnell, our chairman, which I, I, Mike didn't ask me to put this on. I brought it up myself because I thought it was horrible, that there'd be such a lack of respect for the new team. At a public Board of Select meeting stating that Helen Maroni has a "B" in her bonnet, this was one of the ones I was going to let go. But as things have, if only got worse, I think that was unprofessional, insulting and at best, it was extremely sexist. And there was never an apology made. At a public Website Committee on October 23rd, Steve also ignored my request that once the privacy policy was finished in draft, that the BOS should review it. This was one of their meetings. Steve Dewhurst looked me in the face and said, "No, the town administrator will review it." Most recently, he sent me a blog-type email regarding WND with subtle insinuations and nasty undertones that were, had nothing to do with the Website Committee. He was inquiring about the UN proclamation, I mean, the UN treaty that I had mentioned, which I think should have come from the person that initially had had the concern. I will, I will show the Board of Selectmen the email that he sent, but, um, the undertones, if you want to see them, I would prefer not to share them unless he wants to share what he wrote on that email. That was, in my opinion, unacceptable, immature, unfriendly, in lack of a team at all. This is a, a, a chairman of a committee, um, doing this to a selectman. Consistently addressing Helen Maroni in emails as Ms. Marone, Maroni, after I told him, "Steve, you don't have to call me Ms. Maroni, you can call me Helen." Inaccurate and sarcastic meeting minutes of October 23rd directed at Helen Maroni, which I have copies here with several changes and inaccuracies and he did not give me the opportunity since I was pretty much all of the second page to, um, comment or edit. And last but not least, on the October 23rd meeting, being that I have learned a lot about abuse, the bullying techniques that Steve Dewhurst used when he was doing his presentation to me, again, was very unacceptable and unfair. To this, I leave it to the board. This is my recommendation, but as a new team, the five of us, we promise civility in working together and this is not happening. And the Website Committee is important and I think to move forward, Steve has done a phenomenal job in what he has wanted to get done. But I, I mentioned my initial concerns about the software becoming too, um, one-person-dominated and I think that we should, um, consider other avenues, but that's a whole nother topic. Again, my recommendation is to request that Steve Dewhurst step down as Chair of the Website Committee.
Are you done, Helen?
I am.
Okay. Steve, your opportunity. Keep it to the facts, please.
Yep. Um, okay, first of all, with virtual Town Hall, um, I'd like to remind the Committee here that the Selectmen had no interest in the Website Committee for at least two years. Everything we did was in the open. It was in public meeting and we did it with people who, who were interested and wanted to see something happen with a website. So when we decided to, to leave virtual Town Hall, it was a decision made by the Website Committee, by John Q., who was the Town Hall's IT Director and is there under his purview and it was in his budget and the Town Clerk's Office. It was a very staged, very careful and clear decision. Our use of virtual Town Hall was actively damaging our public records. I spent a, many, many hours trying to extract the old meeting minutes from virtual Town Hall. I archived them, they're up on the website, they're backed up, but anybody who looks at those minutes knows there is no structure, no searchability, very difficult to get at information. Virtual Town Hall was costing us $108, uh, a month, which I thought was excessive, given, I mean, it's, it's a good service if you use it properly. Uh, the town of Plymouth, who I didn't rec, I, I did say they had a good website, I don't think it's as good as ours. They pay about $10,000 a year for their service. I knew we weren't going to be able to pay $10,000 a year. I thought we should have the best website in the state for free. I thought that, the Committee thought that, John Q. thought that, the Town Clerk's Office thought that. The Selectmen had no interest, except for Ms. Hewens, whose idea it was to do something about the website. So it was not a cowboy decision, it was a decision with all the stakeholders. Again, John Q., the IT Director, the Town Clerk's Office and the Committee that was appointed by the Board of Selectmen. The concern about my coding the website and having full control of the town's information, I don't have full control of the town's information. The code that I wrote and that the Website Committee approved and that John Q. reviewed and that I developed in coordination with the Town Clerk's Office to their specifications is controlled by our several dozen administrators. The town employees, the members of the boards, the citizens on our committees are the ones who control the information. The website organizes the information. It makes the information more visible, easily accessible, searchable. It's way clearer than virtual Town Hall was. More responsive and more open government. I do not produce information, the Website Committee does not produce information, we make it available to the residents. It's true, we voted unanimously in 2011 to do things like, uh, if somebody decided to change a piece of text from red to blue, we thought that was not worth calling a meeting for. There are many, whenever you put out a website, there are many minor changes, um, that you have to make, you know, something might not line up right, the font might be wrong. They're not worth calling a meeting about. Any substantive change was discussed in open, in public meeting and, um, and the other nice thing about the website is whenever you make a decision, it appears on the website and everybody can see it. There's no hiding any decision on a website. We behaved in a completely responsible and typical manner. Yeah, uh, on, on October 23rd, we did, and actually on November 1st, at our, at our own meeting, um, we did look for input from the Board of Selectmen through Ms. Maroni. Now, the trouble was that I was very clear in the meeting, would you like me to make the list of policies that need to be created or would you like to do it? It's very clear. Ms. Maroni said, "I want to give you the list." We waited for a month, nothing came forward. That's my recollection and it's probably what the minutes said. Whatever the case, there was no input coming from you and therefore, uh, the five-member Committee focused on those policies and procedures that you had mentioned and that we thought were important. And so we developed an augmented website disclaimer and privacy policy. One of our members is, as we talk, I don't know if he's gotten to Rick yet, was going to come with an augmented privacy policy and pass it through Rick for potentially being looked at by Town Council before coming back to the Committee. So we have been acting on that. Another thing we did above and beyond is we've done two things recently. I've been trying to get before the board, actually, for the past two meetings and I keep getting bumped off the agenda. Um, we've done a whole lot of work. Two of the things we've done recently is we have a brand-new security framework that will be even better at tracing who did what, when, from which computer on the website. So if somebody posts a headline, posts a meeting, cancels a meeting, does anything on the website, there is a log file that says exactly who that person is, when they did it and the URL from which they did it. We are locking down the system to give full controls. So if there's ever a legal issue, we have a clear path as to exactly what happened. That's not in place yet. We have, we do have controls right now. They're better than most websites, but the, what's coming down the pike is going to be even more important. We decided to do that as an initiative to make the website more secure and more traceable. In addition, we came up with a draft Administrator's Code of Conduct and that's up on the website. Anybody can comment on it. As you can see, if the public has a comment on it, if anybody else has a comment on it, they can reach the Website Committee through any one of three mechanisms. We have an email address, they can go to the Town Administrator's Office, they can come to our meetings. They can look me up in the phone book. I don't answer my phone very much, though, so email's better. Um, so we have ta, we have taken our statements at the 23rd, uh, meeting very seriously and we've acted on them in, in a very aggressive way. The subscription facility is up and running. I, my understanding was that you had certain concerns about security, so we addressed them. It was secure. The emails, just to be clear for somebody who may not know what's happening, you know, there, there is more to life than the website, although not, not currently for me, apparently. When you subscribe to the website, you have the ability, there are busy people in town. There are different, uh, you know, different people have different needs. Some people are too busy to go to the website every day to see what meetings are of interest. So we have the ability right now, we actually have the best subscription facility in the state at this point, most flexible, gives you the most information. You can sign up with a website, you, you give the email address, you say who you're interested in learning about. You can sign up to any one of 24 different boards, Committees and Commissions. Whenever they post a meeting or a headline or whatever, the website sends you an email about it. You don't have to go to the website, it tells you. You can also get a question of the day to learn about the town government. Uh, you can sign up so that every day you can get a list of that day's public meetings and the following day's public meetings, every day. It's sent out at 3:00 AM every morning, so it's always current. And there are a whole bunch of other things. When you enter your, your email address on the website, it never actually gets to the website. The only thing that's stored is a very highly encrypted version of your email address. The encryption algorithm we're using would take a supercomputer more than 10,000 years to figure out what your email address was. And if it did, you'd get junk mail from the town of Carver. That's the worst that could happen. That's not really good. So the email ad, you're, you're, it's perfectly safe, technically. It's way safer than any other website in the state. We're using a, a very high-level encryption algorithm and again, your email is never actually stored anywhere. It doesn't exist except in encrypted form. Finally, I was able to get a decision from Town Council, uh, apparently just kind of an off-the-cuff decision, very inexpensive. What did it cost, Rick? 15 minutes? Nothing? 10 minutes? And basically, uh, demonstrated that, uh, the emails are safe, cannot be unencrypted, technically cannot be forced to be unencrypted for several different reasons under mass general law. And on that subject, uh, one of the things I have been trying, one of the pieces of information I've been trying to get was, uh, there was, uh, Ms. Maroni reported a conversation with the AG's office that ran counter to the advice of our Town Council. And I've been trying to get the information, who did she talk to, what did she ask, what was the answer, and I can't seem to get that information. So eventually, given all the positive information, given the, uh, our Town Council, given the fact that I know that the email addresses are perfectly safe, we had a unanimous vote of our five-member Commission to reinstate the subscription facility because it is something that the citizens of Carver deserve. Further, um, I don't think I was actually proper in taking it down in the first place because the Board of Selectmen did not ask me to. One of the Selectmen asked me to and I, believe it or not, in an attempt to be collegial, did what I was asked, but that was improper because I did it without a, a vote of the Board of Selectmen, I did it without a vote of my own board, my own Committee. That was improper. But reinstating it was done in a perfectly proper way. As a matter of fact, I do want to point out that, that all of these, uh, supposed insubordinations that I've been accused of here are not, I have not been, i- if it is insubordination, I was not being insubordinate to the Board of Selectmen because the board never asked me to do anything. One member of the board had an opinion that she thought I should execute. And I took that person's opinion under consideration, gave it every respect, but it was not a directive We were bad about posting minutes. We took minutes. Uh, the problem with the minutes was at first, I took them. And if anybody's seen my handwriting, you know why it took me so long to produce them. Ellen Blanchard has been taking them since and they're much more readable and so we're all up to date on our minutes except for our last meeting. Inappropriate language on the website. I think it's difficult to imagine why telling somebody that a volunteer committee has day jobs, this isn't, we're trying to be a friendly site as well as a useful site. You'll notice our site does a lot of things that other websites don't do. Why? Because this is a site for everybody in Carver. Not everybody is a computer whiz. Not everybody feels comfortable going to a website. So we do a lot of things. Sometimes the language is casual. We say, "Send us an email message, but please be patient because we have day jobs." That is supposed to give people a level of comfort. When you go to a usual website and you type in a broken URL, this is something that, uh, Jack and I talked about some time ago. I have been in com, in consultation with the Selectmen over the years. If you type in a wrong, say, uh, treztax.html was the old address of the treasurer tax collector. Somebody might have an old tax bill. They type in carvermat.org/treztax.html. What does the usual website do? 404 not found, file does not exist, jump in a lake. That's the typical response you get from a website. What does the town of Carver website do? It says, "Hey, it looks like you've got an old link here. We think it's actually this new link. Try that one. If that's not it, then go to this menu and try that. And by the way, if you feel like paying some taxes, click here." That's a friendly website. If you type in an old URL, the website maintains a mapping from the old, uh, old address to the new address and it guides people who may be a little bit nervous about going to a website to a good and friendly resolution. So telling people that we have day jobs, I think, is a friendly statement. If the Board of Selectmen is so offended by that, they can take, I think, a vote. I don't think it's proper for the Website Committee to make a change based on the opinions of a single Selectman. I'd like, I think I'm very proud of the way the website is, is designed so that we can actually accommodate 100 administrators without blinking. 100 administrators without blinking an eye. And I think it's important to tell people that. I think it's important that when people go to the website, if they're wondering, gee, this is a great website, how much is this costing me in taxes, for them to know, it's free. I call that being friendly and communicating directly with the public on an equal basis. I don't think websites should show off technically. I think websites are there to serve people, and part of that is making people feel accepting of the website. Okay, on to the final, disrespect and insubordination of members of us. Does not work well with others. Well, I work well with others in my professional career. That's what my job is about. Companies call me in to fix their problems, and I do. I choose to send any updated correspondence relative to the Committee to Sarah Hewens and Dick Ward. That's not true. I don't send things to Dick.
He doesn't know anything about computers.
That's not what I was going to say. I sent them to Ms. Hewens, because the website was her idea.
I have copies right here.
What was it about?
It was your website, correspondence to your website committee.
It's conceivable.
Sarah Hewens and Dick Waters continuously on.
And what was the date? Because my typical list is the Website Committee.
Keep going and I'll find it for you.
I'll look it up in my email when I get home, if you want. The typical, I call them Website Committee and Friends. These are the people who want to know about the website, and typically.
It's one right here, November 16th, to Robert, Ellen Blanchard, Michelle, me, Sarah, Richard.
Well, apparently, you were on that list, too. I don't know why Mr. Ward was on that list, because he has no interest in the website.
I wasn't on the list.
Well, you have been recently, truly.
No, I haven't been.
Yes, you have. I have them right here.
Okay.
We're talking, we're communicating.
That's good.
Good, that's good.
The typical list is the Website Committee and people who are interested. The typically interested people are Ms. Hewens, Rick LaFond, and up until recently, John Adams, and very often, Jean McGillicuddy from the Town Clerk's office. It could have, I don't know why I would send, maybe I was trying to get on Dick's bad side, or maybe, you know, I wanted to get him irritated with me or something. But there's, I don't know, I'm certainly not trying to play favorites here. I could send it out to the whole town. I mean, I try to pick and choose my emails for people who are interested in receiving them. I edit my email lists. Yeah, I sent a snippy, formal letter to Mr. O'Donnell.
I ignored it.
I thought you would. And basically, what was the issue that?
I don't know. I don't know.
I'll have to look it up.
I'm not sure.
Mike pissed me off, I pissed him off. He seems to be standing. It was a private letter to Mike, he can take it up with me if he wants. I don't know, I don't know why you felt it was your job to stick up for Mike.
It's accumulation of.
I'm from Brooklyn, I can't help it. That was a joke.
That explains a lot of things.
I'm from Dorchester, and I have more tact than that, Steve.
Dorchester is much higher class.
All right, kids. Back to the facts.
Yeah, it's not even funny.
Yeah. I apologize for the remark I made at the meeting. You know, I was quite irritated. You had called me a variety of things, including unprofessional and unethical. And I imagine I did not control myself properly, I should not have addressed you that way. I apologize. And I'll give it in writing, if you like. I would point out, at that particular meeting, you did have a document that you read, a prepared statement. And basically, everything you said was incorrect. And I didn't, I don't think it was incorrect on purpose, I think it was incorrect, because you basically refused to communicate with me. I did my very best to contact you, changed my schedule, gave you my cellphone number, but you basically.
Your opinion that the information was incorrect, but that's not.
Well, I can actually.
All right, all right.
Again, that's not the point.
Go back and forth. Ellen, let him finish. Steve, just wrap it up, please.
Sure. We've already talked about the privacy policy. I don't recall that I said no. I might have said it's more appropriate that the Town Administrator review it. That would be my opinion. And of course, the Committee voted unanimously, I believe, to do that suggestion. I'm not even sure I made that suggestion, that might have been one of the other Committee members. The issue with WorldNetDaily is off-topic. I was writing to you as a citizen, I was frankly offended that you were making policy based on news that you received from that website. I'm happy to drop the topic now, or take it up, it's up to you. That was a letter, that was an email, a polite email, at first, from a citizen who was questioning how you were arriving at your policy decisions. It was nothing to do with the Website Committee.
Why wouldn't that have come through your wife, the Selectmen?
Because you're the one who made the statement.
No, but it was during, that, never mind that question. The WND, Sarah Hewens asked me the question of where I found out about that there was a UN treaty going on.
Right.
I nonchalantly mentioned that. I look at a lot of online and I read a lot, but I believe it came from WND, which is the WorldNetDaily, which compiles a lot of news articles from around the world. If we wanted to look at, because there are a lot of conservative, right-wing extremist views on that website, but if you looked where that UN treaty information came from, it was a legitimate place. The bottom line is, where you sent me to, in terms of information regarding WND, was a civil rights law firm, which also, I could sit here and debate with you about your leanings towards different things. Steve, we can look at every single media outlet, and every single media outlet can have its biases. We have to be professional enough to know right from wrong. And if anyone Googled the UN treaty, I'm sure you would have found that information anywhere out there. If you have to doubt my facts, then you need to do the research, not sit here and condemn a Board of Selectmen who was supposed to be working as a team about being a right-wing extremist. That is what you are insinuating.
And I address those remarks to you, because that is indeed my concern. And it was a private email to my elected representative. I did not intend that to be a public matter, but I thought that you should know, that I highly disagreed with that source.
I was not trying to sway anybody. My political decisions are not based on a WorldNetDaily. And I consider that an insult, that you would think that.
Well, that's what you stated, I could only go by your words.
Okay, all right, that's enough.
I did not, excuse me.
Ellen, that's enough, back and forth on that, okay. All right, Steve, are you done?
I don't know how many points I have left here. Bullying techniques, I already apologized for my comment after, of course, I had been accused of being whatever. I should not have done that. Regardless, I don't recall any other bullying. I did approach you at one point and show you the encrypted emails, was that what you were referring to? I don't know what you mean.
Bullying techniques, let me show you.
Is this going to hurt?
You come to a person and you stand over them, and you just stand there and you eye them. Now, you're a wrestler, so you may not feel the same way, but how would you feel?
I.
Would you feel intimidated?
If I may.
That is a bullying technique.
I certainly.
And I know that from abusive classes that I once had, so I know the signs, Steve. And that is exactly what you were trying to do to me.
I.
And it didn't work.
Well, of course it didn't, because that's not what I was trying to do. And actually, I have looked at that meeting a couple of times on the website, because now we're posting meeting videos. And as I recall, I stepped up to you and handed you something, and then I stepped back.
It's all in the presentation, Steve.
I apologize for my presentation, but there was no intention of that. As a matter of fact.
Of course not.
In my past, I have spent a lot of time teaching women self-defense. I would never try to physically intimidate a woman. And I, if I did, I apologize.
Well, I felt that way.
I apologize for that, but that was not my intent. And if I review the tape again, I think I saw it correctly. I did not, I approached you, I stepped back for precisely that reason. I did not want to stand over you. I'm not a very impressive person to start with, and so.
All right. Steve, are you all set?
I'm, I guess I am. The only thing Ms. Maroni seems to think that I don't respect her.
Excuse me, there was one last point I'd like you to address, because I would like to have the October 23rd minutes re-reviewed, please.
I don't recall any sarcasm. And now, these, the 23rd minutes of the Website Committee?
For one, one example is, well, a lot of the points that you made about my statements that I made were inaccurate. Just, I won't read through each one of them, Mike, because we can go over them individually, Stephen.
But may I interject one thing?
But one of them, where was it? That, bear with me for one, oh, that we, the Committee, can invade anyone's life. That you said that was a concern.
Can I?
What I stated was I was quoting what you said.
That's right.
That you can invade anyone's life through the computer. And the other piece that I would like removed, or if it's not removed, what I want to be put into the Board of Selectmen's minutes on October 23rd, was that you chose to say that I had a bee in my bonnet. And I would like that on the formal record. If you choose to keep the comments, Mr. Dewhurst remarked that if Helen's unhappy, I'm unhappy. That is sarcasm.
No, that was actually, Mr. O'Donnell was trying to curtail a discussion, and I wanted to make sure that you were happy. I didn't think that was a rude statement.
Well, if you want to keep that in there, then I, because this is why October 23rd minutes haven't.
At our next, at our next meeting, I will insert the bee in the bonnet comment, for which I apologize. Regarding the "we can invade anyone's life," you can recall that came off of a joke when I was talking about having a webcam on Rick's office. And can we invade everybody, anybody's life? No, of course not. Are we going to? No, we can't. It wouldn't be legal. Do we have the ability? No. I didn't, I did not expect anybody to think that I was going to put webcams in, I don't know, well, Rick's office might be a good idea. And I will point out that Mr. O'Donnell thought it was a good idea, too.
I can't remember that far back. I'd have to read the minutes.
Again, I apologize to the residents for taking up so much time with an employee conflict issue, but again, you chose to have this out in public.
I think it's better, I think things should be open.
Which I guess is a good thing. But I do apologize to the residents.
All right, thank you to the both of you. What I'd like to do is ask the other colleagues on the Board if they have anything that they would like to contribute to this issue.
I'll give it to Dick.
It's difficult for me to comment all the specifics on the website, because I'm not a very familiar person with websites and computers. I just do a very basic email, and that's it. I know we expanded this Committee to five members, and I was hoping that that could level any of the differences that we had between that Committee and us. I do, and I don't mean to point the finger at anybody, but there seems to be a discord between you two folks that isn't really helping where we want to go with the website. I see that the Website Committee has done a good job changing the website, updating it, because I know it was really in sad shape. So, now we have a website that seems to be updated in more what our citizens need. Right now, I prefer to say, okay, to the Committee, if you folks elect your chairman, you should maybe, if you feel there's a need to change your chairman, do so. But right now, I'm not upset with the work of the whole Committee. Of course, my education on it is very limited. I'm sitting here and I'm listening to the different components that the Committee has put together, and.
I will share, Dick, that just from experience from my own career, is that when you have one person, and I know, Steve, that you say that, the end-user piece, I agree with you, that everyone has their own abilities, but somebody has to be the core. And you've come right out and said that you have custom programmed, you have done things. And it had cost my company thousands of dollars in consulting fees, because we got wrapped up with one person that had control over the custom programming. So, from that point of view, yes, there is obviously something that Steve does not like to work with me, and that is fine. However, from the software point of view, I am concerned, that is my biggest concern, about one person having control over the custom programming of that system. So, I don't want to belabor the issue.
If I may interject, the choice was not whether we had custom programming or spend $10,000 to get an inferior product from Virtual Town Hall. The question was, do we have some custom programming, or do we have nothing at all? As an interim step, until, you know, until the town can afford a full implementation of Virtual Town Hall, you know, the custom programming is all we had available. We had, we had the choice, as a Committee, to sit there and say, we'd like this, that, and the other thing, and then wait five, 10 years. Well, we had budget available to do something like that. We decided to actually solve a problem. We decided to save some money, and we decided to make our government more open, to give people more information, more flexibility. Now, what have we lost? Suppose my custom programming, you know, any competent web programmer can look at my code and maintain it. Furthermore, if I were to drop dead, or to get hit by a truck, or run over by Dick in the parking lot, the website would be able to take care of itself for six or eight months before it started to need some maintenance. It's designed to take care of itself. It can't take care of itself indefinitely, but that would be a good hiatus during which you could decide how to solve the problem. So, the choice was not custom programming or something else, it was custom programming or no website.
Thank you, Steve.
Dick?
Finish up.
As I look at the Committee, I mean, we have five pretty knowledgeable people. Our last two appointments, Mr. Shannon, and I don't remember, the final.
Ms. Cohen.
Cohen. They seem to be very knowledgeable. I mean, you've got a knowledgeable Committee.
We have a good group of people, and we each have our own sphere of knowledge. And we don't intersect very much, but we all turn out to be extraordinarily useful together. It's a good team.
Okay, so, you know, that's where I'm at.
Jack, did you have anything you wanted to interject on this?
As far as the suspension of the subscription service, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, but wasn't that your request to Steve to do that?
I did request that Steve do that, and I did that, because I know it had concerns for Helen. Until those concerns could be answered, Steve did agree to do that.
Yeah, and you have a fairly close working relationship with Steve, so.
I don't give him any more respect than anybody else.
I'm not saying that. All I'm just saying is that you have a very good working relationship together. So, I thought that maybe with you asking him, he would abide by it.
If I may, Jack. The reason I had trouble with my decision to actually do what Helen asked Rick to do is because I don't think it was proper. I think I should have had a vote from the Board of Selectmen as a whole, and I should have taken it to the Committee. But instead, what I did is, under, you know, some pressure, I turned the thing off. And that was improper.
And see, I disagree with that.
We need, we, as Helen says, we need procedures. If we're going to allow one member of a Board to make decisions like that, that's not healthy.
Rick LaFond is our liaison with all the Committees that either we appoint or he appoints. So, basically, when I need anything from any of the Committees, I'll go to him, and he can make the decision, ask you to do something or not do something. I don't know, I don't think it takes a vote of the Board of Selectmen every single time, because he's here as the Town Administrator.
I don't want it to get lost here, though, that the intent of Steve was to accommodate the concern of a member of the Board of Selectmen. There was, you know, and yes, did I play a role in imploring Steve to do that? Yes, but I don't want to get caught up on.
No, and I realize that, but that's the perfect, that's the purpose of having a Town Administrator. You'll handle the day-to-day things for the members of the Board of Selectmen and things like that, I would think, you know, so that's.
Well, and I will tell you, the other thing that I'd appreciate, and I think most Committees would appreciate, is we like direct communication if somebody has a concern. I want you to pick up the phone, send me an email. That's not an order, that's a communication, saying, I think this is a good idea, and I'm going to go back to my Board and get a vote. That's what I'd like to see.
Well, that might be what you'd like to see, but what I would prefer to see is that we. is that we continue on going to the Board of Selectmen, I mean, to the town administrator. Have him be our liaison. That's his purpose.
I, I understand that, and I'm happy to do that, if that's your decision. But what, what if Ms. Maroni has one decision, and Mr. Ward has a different one? They both go to Rick and have, and pull Rick in two different directions? Is that a way, is that any way to run a, a committee? I don't think so.
Well, if, if I could maybe interject, Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of this sounds like it's relationship issues, and we all know, I've been at this, in government for over 20 years, and effective relationships, I would say probably in any organization, I've, I've grown up in government, so that's the key to getting anything done for either a short or a long period of time. I mean, there are people in this town, there's people in this room, perhaps, that I have appointed to committees who I am absolutely certain have extremely different views on things than me. Some of them may not even have been very nice to me at times, and, but I like to think over the long haul, I think everybody has a right, barring any significant misconduct, has a right to be involved in their local government if, if they, they willing to make the effort and do it in good faith. And I, I would like to think that we could solve some of these relationship issues in a different fashion than what we're doing here tonight.
Isn't it funny? We just had that conversation today, you and I, about those relationships.
Well, we, yeah, I mean-
Jack, you have anything else?
This was in an email that I had gotten from Steve on October 8th, and he had in it, it's past time for everyone to get their minutes up on the website. And I happened to go in, because I wanted to do my due diligence of what was going to happen here. So on Monday, I went in to get minutes of the website committee, and, you know, for minutes as far as a year and a half ago, wasn't really posted in the town clerk's office until November 16th. And I just found it kind of unique that you're asking us, as departments and committees and stuff, to be posting our minutes on the website, and you really haven't done your own. It's kind of like you got a practice-
You've heard about the Cobblers' Kids Shoes? Actually, I, although I didn't, I admit, I, I had a hard time reading my handwriting. That's my excuse. Things have improved since Ellen Blanchard has been taking minutes, but I, in my own defense, I will say, I, I did post more than 100 minutes for other committees, for the finance committee, for the Board of Selectmen, for other, you know, one reason or another. So I was posting minutes left, right, and center. I just wasn't posting mine.
And, you know, in, along the lines of that, about a year ago, July, we made the, a policy of the Board of Selectmen for all the committees that either Rick appointed or we appointed, we wanted them to make sure that they post their meetings with the town clerk's office. And I didn't want that to be forgotten, because that gets date stamped, and we know when it's been done. Are they going to be bypassing the, the town clerk and just putting them on the website? Because that defeats the purpose.
When you post a meeting to the website, what happens is the following. It's a much more secure mechanism. First of all, it goes right up on the website, that second, everybody in the world can see it. Second, it sends a copy to you, so you know that this is what was posted. The same email goes to the town clerk's office, so you are sending it to the town clerk's office. An email also goes to an archive that stays there forever. And there's a log file that says who did it and when they did it. So when you post to the website, you are giving it to the town clerk, and that is what the town clerk wants you to do. This system was developed to their specification.
But does the date stamp get, does it get date stamped in the town clerk's office?
It's date stamped electronically. It's a much more secure date stamp, and there are four separate copies of it.
Well, see, it's an official stamp from the town clerk's office.
This is what the town clerk wanted. Now, I understand that when the town clerk does get the email, they do print it off and date stamp it and put it in their book.
That's all I need to know.
But that is their procedure. I don't mess with the internals of the town clerk's office. I do what they tell me to.
Jack?
That's it.
That's it. All right, I'm going to give Helen one last opportunity to answer some of Steve's remarks, and then Steve can wrap up.
No, the person, personality issue between the two of us was secondary. My bigger concern, and I, I just want it on the record, no matter what you decide tonight, I want it on the record that John Adams mentioned last year at the budget hearings that we should start considering a full-time website person. Within this past year, the website has accelerated to the point where I feel that very shortly there's going to be a request for a full-time position. My other concern, I am extremely concerned that one person is in charge of the custom programming, the encrypting, the backing up files, et cetera. And last but not least, I still have a problem with when you have a Board of Selectmen team and that you are not working in sync with us, that I still ask that you consider, think about it, to step down as chair. That October 23rd meeting, I'm going to make it clear again, if you go back and look at the meeting itself, the joint meeting, we had decided, because we were going to have a new relationship and start working together, and that you were going to put the policies and procedures together and bring them back to the Board of Selectmen before you turn the subscription facility back on. That was not the, and that is how I'm going to leave my statements, is those are my concerns. I want it on the record for no matter what happens with the decision tonight. That I am terribly concerned that we're getting too in-depth with this website right now. The economy is tough, and I think right now, it's free, but I think that's going to be short-lived. Thank you.
With respect to the website person, that's the first I've heard of that, and if it-
First you heard of what?
That somebody was considering hiring a webmaster.
Well, John, John Adams, this was during the budget hearings, so these are all things that I have to take into account instead.
Sure, I'd recommend against it. I, we don't need a webmaster. That's the last thing we need here. The website is largely taking care of itself. It's designed so you don't need a webmaster. We have real technology needs in this town, and the webmaster is at the end of the line. Ellen Smith, and I think she has one person, is taking care of-
He may have said IT web.
We do need an IT person. We need, our, our technology is being held together by force of will from Ellen Smith. She needs some help, and she, we need more equipment, and we need this, that. We don't need a webmaster. We need basic IT infrastructure. We need better internet connections. So I would recommend highly against it. And further, just because this comes up on various local websites, not ours, on occasion, I have no interest in being a town employee or consulting for the town. You couldn't afford me.
Okay, Rick, this is a public hearing, correct?
No, it's not.
It's not a?
No.
Okay.
Well, this was a discussion that the board called to speak to Mr. Dewhurst.
So there will be no public participation. All right. Everybody's had a chance to speak.
I have information regarding this, and-
That's, that's completely inappropriate. I mean, this is a meeting for the Board of Selectmen to present Mr. Dewhurst with any concerns. No, he didn't. I didn't hear that. I don't think he opened it up to the public.
Bob, hold it. I think we can maybe resolve this tonight somehow or another. After listening to everything, you know, I agree with Rick. I think it's a personality issue. What I see is a tug-of-war between two people. But I also share some of Helen's concerns about the subscriptions, about being dependent upon one individual who is tied into the political scene, and in fact, related to a current sitting selectman. So, you know, and, and there's multiple ways to look at this thing. And you know, perceptions play a large role, Steve, you know, in, in how you're viewed, and how people deal with you. You know, and if you're acerbic, if you're obstinate, people get offended by that.
I, I-
Okay, just let me finish speaking, okay? That may be your attempt at humor, that that other person doesn't understand, and so now you've got to disconnect right out of the gate, okay? And that may be what transpired here for the most part, because I think, otherwise, we may have all been able to sit down and resolve these issues. You're an intelligent guy, you've got a lot to offer, as evidenced by what you've already accomplished, but this is fast becoming a distraction, and it's detracting us from being able to conduct town business that's extremely important. We're just part-time officials. We don't have a whole lot of time on our hands, so every minute we waste in something like this impacts the town and other areas. And, and that does not sit well with me, okay? We shouldn't be here in the first place. You sit on an ad hoc committee that was created by the Board of Selectmen, you serve at our pleasure. Ms. Maroni is a selectman, okay? You answer to her. You don't disrespect her. You and I can go back and forth, we have a little history. Like I said, I ignored your letter, didn't bother me. She's a different person, and you have to take that into account, okay? The Board of Selectmen doesn't work for the website committee. Do you understand that?
I understand that, but the website committee does not work for one selectman. We are under the board.
A request from a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Which I've honored.
Okay. Needs to be considered, as if coming from the board, okay? We don't need to take a vote on everything. If she has some concerns, then you need to allay those concerns.
When someone has concerns, they can bring them to me. I, I had the greatest of difficulty in speaking to get the concerns straightened out.
I have a difficult time responding with you because of your, the way you present yourself on the emails. I, I-
I, I would point out-
It's very antagonistic, so-
If you, I'm sorry to say, but if you look at all of the emails, there was that one email as a resident to you. That is the only one.
And that's all it takes. You know, once, once you tip the scales, sometimes it's very difficult to go back, okay? So, you know, I'm looking for some suggestions here on how we can resolve this. Does somebody have any recommendations? Does somebody have any motions?
I'd like to ask Helen, you know, what do you think about the subscription service? You still disappointed that that's in place, or is that acceptable to you?
No, I, I think we're, I, as much as it, it sounds like we're going backwards, I just mentioned, I think we are getting too advanced, and it, it's going to end up biting us in the back, and I, I am more hurt, upset that that joint meeting was to bring us together. We were going to start a relationship, and the fact that we had a plan, I withdrew my motion that evening because we had made an agreement, and the agreement wasn't fulfilled.
May I, may I point out two things about that meeting that you just represented as bringing us together? The agenda item was to hear a report from the website committee-
Okay, I'm sorry, right.
And then take a vote, possible vote to disband the committee.
Correct. That's what I apologize was-
That's a very unfriendly start. And further, you had a prepared statement that was made in advance of the meeting that was very negative, and I claim was largely inaccurate. Not on purpose, but simply because you didn't allow me to communicate with you.
A lot of the information is not inaccurate, but we're not going to debate that this evening. All as I'm saying is, we were going to come together that night and begin to work together, and it didn't happen because the subscription facility was on. I think we're opening up a can of worms, a small town getting this big on a website so fast. I, I really, what I would like, I think we should put a halt on it. They've done their job, website committee, but I didn't want to go that far tonight. You just asked me my opinion. I think the, the minutes and everything, being able to be out there is great, but I think the remote participation should be on hold. I think the Twitter account, the CCAT, I think it should be all put on hold, so we can work on the school and the consolidation pro, the consol, the thoughts of the consolidation, and then revisit this when we see the budgets for this year, because I know, I guarantee that eventually this is going to cost us money, and that's how I'm going to end it.
Do we have some kind of a motion?
Well, I had, my recommendation was, I was hoping once Steve heard my concerns that he would consider, think about still being on the website committee, but allowing somebody else to take on the helm as chair who works better with me. I mean, I know it's not just me, but you, I'm, this is where I wish we were in executive session, Steve, because I'm trying to respect you, because you are an intelligent man. But many people have said that the reason why nobody ever applied to the website committee was because they were afraid to work with you. You, Rick LaFond even commented that, that, yes, I agree that that has happened.
If, if you're asking me if I've ever commented that Steve might be difficult to work with, I might agree with that.
No, that you, no, 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 that you have heard that people were intimidated to join the committee, so-
I, I think-
That, that's my only thought, is that to shift the-
If I'm reading this correct, your concerns are the, besides the personal thing, which I think we can-
Right.
Probably fix.
Work with that, yes.
Yeah, we can work with that.
And that's why it was secondary on, on my list. It was very, very secondary.
Eliminating the subscriptions, return to a virtual town hall.
Well, that, that would have to be-
These, these are big, that's, those are big money issues, operational issues.
That's a big one, because we would have to change the whole software. What I'm saying is, I, my opinion is, is we need to put a halt on the Twitter, the CCAT, the, and the subscription facility.
And you mentioned remote participation.
Yeah, well, I think we should just put that on hold as well.
We don't, we don't have remote participation until the Board of Selectmen votes to have remote participation. Having the capacity to do it-
And the IDA is supposed to come to us with some proposal next month, sometime, right?
And, and until, until there are some, some proposals on that, we don't have it. Whether, whether we have the technical capacity is, is a different issue than whether or not we actually engage in it, and that's ultimately a decision by the Board of Selectmen.
So we want to eliminate the subscriptions and, and put everything on hold?
Steve, you just asked me what my thoughts of going forward. My, my initial tonight was, is I was wanting to ask Steve if he would consider stepping down as chairperson of the committee.
Steve?
I'll answer that in just a second. I do want to point out that I cannot conceive of any possible reason why you would want to handicap a working website that is serving the residents in ways they're not, they hadn't been served previously. I was, I was a little irritated, actually, when we had a hurricane bearing down on us, and we had a facility that would allow all the public safety departments to automatically email any interested person, that that was taken offline just before the hurricane hit. That's a great service. Every morning, when I get up, I know exactly what's going on at town hall. Rick is always saying, how did you know we had, like, changed that meeting? Well, every morning, Rick, I get a synopsis of what's happening. I don't have to lift a finger. It comes to me. I think a lot of people in town like that. I see no reason to take a working, safe facility that is present in, I think, less sophisticated forms in all the towns around us, or about 50% of the towns around us, just because you don't feel comfortable with it. It's, it's not dangerous technology. As a matter of fact, it's perfectly safe. And if anybody wants to, I'd be happy to walk them through the technology. I'll show you the code if that makes you happier. But I think it's a mistake to basically say to the residents, we're a little bit worried about this, so you can't have this service, even though it's free.
This, this is my thoughts-
The question hasn't been answered.
And the answer to the question is, that's a decision from my committee. If they want to replace the chair, then they can reorganize.
Well, I think she's asking you to resign, and that's something that only you could do.
Right. I may resign at our next meeting. I may not. I'll think it over, but thank, I probably won't, but I'll put it to them, and I'll allow, I'll give the committee the, if they want to reorganize, if they, they think I'm too combative, or my code is too abstruse, then they can replace me.
What I don't want to do is have to come back here and do this again.
No.
I didn't want to come, I didn't even know why I was coming here, frankly.
I mean, how long have we been here now? It's quarter, quarter to ten, one hour.
I, as, as Rick wrote to you in an email, he thought that this, the idea of having an executive session to solve this problem was inappropriate. You, you could have given me a phone call. You could have sent me an email.
Well, I think we, I think we need to air this out, Steve.
Yeah, there's, there's not a comfort level. I don't feel comfortable, and I'm being quite honest.
You could tell Dick to do it. He tells me his mind all the time.
Well, I'm glad you have a good relationship with the boys.
All right. So at this point in time, we have a stalemate, okay? So I need some kind of a motion if we want to set some parameters?
Well, I would also keep in mind that what, you know, you don't have anything on the agenda besides presenting this gentleman with, with complaints and charges, so-
Right, and that's why I would-
So I think, you know, whether it's, you'd like to make a formal request to the web committee to consider whether or not he should be chairman, might be in line with what's on the agenda.
We can certainly start with that.
But I think, I think that would be, besides that, I'm not sure what would be in line with what is on the agenda.
When's the next meeting, Steve?
We haven't scheduled one yet, because I, people- Uh, we haven't scheduled one yet, because, um, like, people, it takes time for people to recover from the between meetings. So sometime in January, probably.
It's just, I mean, it, it doesn't stop.
Probably not.
No, probably not.
No, see, this is going nowhere fast.
So you're saying, Rick, that we couldn't make a motion to take any sort of action, 'cause it's not really appropriately.
No, I think, I think if you're gonna, if you're gonna have any discussion about the content or context of the site itself, you should have the committee in here for a discussion. I don't think that was what you're here for tonight. I mean, the issues with regard to the site itself, I mean, the subscription service, that's, you know, that's not, that, I mean, I don't wanna overblow it. That's not a liability issue, per se. That's, nothing like that. I, um, you know, I don't want things to be taken out of context here, okay? There's no, there's no issues of liability or, or exposure. That's not the point.
Well, the only reason I brought that up, because Steve had said several times, you know, the selectmen never took a vote on stuff, and my belief is that we deal through you. You're the liaison to, and obviously, we have a disconnect on that, Steve and I do, so. You know, maybe, maybe we should some, put something on the agenda where we'll end up taking a vote. I'd prefer not to do that, but, you know.
And I, I, I don't disagree with that, Jack. I mean.
What I would like to see, Steve, is you have a meeting before our next meeting, okay? 'Cause I wanna put this on the agenda for the eighth of January, to deal with this and get, get it done behind us.
So you, you want a, a joint meeting on the eighth of January? Or do you want us to meet prior to the eighth?
No, I'd like you guys to meet as a website committee prior to the eighth, make a determination if they wanna keep you installed as the, the chairman.
That's their decision, yeah.
Yeah, and just let us, let us know, because I wanna put this back on the agenda for the eighth of January, to come to some kind of conclusion.
Right. Can I, can I ask, just to follow up on that? Should Steve step down as chair, or should the committee choose to reorganize and not have Steve as the chairman? Would that, um, I guess, forestall us having this back on the agenda? Or would, I'm just, just out of curiosity.
I don't understand.
I mean, I don't wanna, I mean, to, to have things on the agenda to rehash this if, if.
The thing I got out of.
That's my concern. I don't.
Well, other than the conflicts between Steve and Helen, the thing I got out of it was the concern about the subscription service, you know, virtual town hall. So, I mean, those would still be issues that we'd have to discuss with them, with the website committee. So regardless of whether Steve was still the chairman or not the chairman, I think we should invite all of them and tell them.
You might wanna let them discuss that themselves well before that. I mean, that's not, that's not, I don't think that's a quick discussion among the committee. I think that's a long-term discussion, research.
All I'm saying, I'm just giving you a reason, and one of the things why we're having a meeting.
Well, why don't we schedule them to come in as a committee on the eighth of January?
Well, we, I, I agree. We've been trying to get them in here for an update for a couple of meetings now. In fact, as you know, we were actually gonna do that tonight, until this recent event came about, uh, with, with this particular discussion, so.
In the meantime, Steve, if you could accommodate and set up a website committee meeting, and make a determination what they wanna do going forward. If it's gonna be in the best interest of the town and the web, website to move on to somebody else as a chairman or whatever, then so be it. If not, and then we'll come in on the eighth, and we'll, we'll deal with the issues, whatever they are, okay? Whether it's setting up parameters or rules, 'cause we have no, we have no guidelines, we have no, um, regulations at this point in time. So maybe we need to implement some if, if there's some concerns about.
Well, one, one other thing the website has is a list of policies, and I've been going around to all the committees trying to get policies, so I can get them up on the website, so everybody knows. There's no policy for this. I'd, I'd be happy to follow a policy if it existed.
You would probably be better at writing one of those than us.
You, I.
You and your committee, collectively, okay? That's what I meant, and, and then presenting those to us, but, uh, could you accommodate that, have a meeting with your website committee?
If I can herd all five cats into the room at the same time, yes. I'll, I'll do what I can with this group. I will do my very best to meet before the eighth.
Okay. Your concerns are still there. I understand.
But I am the one person, so, and I, I just wanted it out, you know, it's out there now in terms of protecting the residents.
You were the one person, but now the board, full board's gonna consider it, so.
And you, and you, some of your concerns are shared.
Yeah.
And it may be, uh, my ignorance, like Dick says, he doesn't know a lot about computers, and, you know, I'm not that well-versed in them either, so.
I depend on the expertise of the people on this committee, you know? That's the way it has to be.
That's why I hope, um, my point about one person doing custom programming is not undermined. I lived through that, and.
I share that with you. That scares me. But maybe some of the other members of the board can come in here and tell us that they understand the, the language, and they can speak it and read it and write it if something happens.
No, that's not the case, but most, there are a number of people who can. The point is, the question is not, again, I'm gonna repeat myself. It bore people. The question was not custom programming or some service. It was custom programming or no website.
I move we adjourn.
Before.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.